Good evening. This ninth meeting of the 73rd term of Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in the virtual meeting, please note that I will recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and then begin to speak. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Bonnie McCubbin. She is the pastor of Good Shepherd United Methodist Church in Hampden. Pastor Bonnie, I appreciate you making time for us this evening, and I turn the floor over to you.
Amen. Thank you very much, President Mosby. I appreciate that. This evening, as you mentioned, I am joining you from Good Shepherd in the 14th District under the leadership of Councilmember Odette Ramos. And I appreciate the invitation to be with you this evening. At this time, I invite all who wish to participate in prayer to join me in these words addressed to God. God of many names, Almighty Creator, Allah, Lord, Abba, Mother, Father, God. We come before you this evening representing a variety of faiths, neighborhoods, districts, and interests, but united as people dedicated to making our city a better place for all who live, work, worship, and play here. As we do the business that is before us tonight, as we look at the sometimes boring but always important issues of zoning, divestment, residency requirements, ensuring accuracy and transparency in all that we do to spend city resources and money wisely, as we seek to overcome crime and domestic violence and violence against women so that all people can feel safe and actually be safe in our great city, we are humbled to serve as a voice for our community. As we listen not only with our ears but with our hearts, may we be a discerning voice and presence for our communities and neighborhoods. There are no easy answers. Help us to be moved to action and not paralyzed by fear. Lord, part the sea of discontent and make a way where there seems to be no way, especially with our zoning and parking. We left up to you by name, our mayor, Brandon Scott, and our city council, Nick and Zeke, Danielle, Ryan, Mark, Yipsey, Sharon, James, Christopher, John Felicia, Eric, Robert, Antonio, and Odette. Guide each one of them by principles and morals greater than any one of us so that the city council can make decisions for the good of all Baltimoreans. Where we are divided graces with a unity of spirit to strive for good so that your will may be done. Blessed are you, oh Lord, our God, ruler of the universe. Amen and amen.
Amen. Reverend Bonnie, did I hear Baltimoreans or Baltimoreans?
Whatever you want to hear is the way you can hear it. My family hails from East Baltimore. My grandparents met in the back of St. Paul's Methodist Church where their grandparents set them up on a date. So, you know, my family has been here since 1645.
That's beautiful. Well, Reverend Bonnie, thank you so much for providing us that wholesome and right word. You can hang out with us or you're free to go, but we truly appreciate what you mean to the community, and we thank you for taking the time out for us tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for the invitation. I think my kids are looking for dinner, though.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Reverend Bonnie.
Thank you. God bless.
So now we're going to turn to the Pledge of Allegiance. So please, if you have a flag around you or however you're going to be able to kind of minister it, we're going to start the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, we're going to turn to our showcase. For our showcase, this evening, we're joined by Baltimore City Department of Recreation and Parks Youth Advisory Council. At this time, it is my pleasure to recognize the amazing Director, Reginald Moore, who will introduce these young leaders to us.
Thank you, Council President Mosby and all the elected officials, council members. I'm truly excited to be here tonight to introduce or allow them to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about them and what they're going to bring to our city. I had an opportunity this weekend to spend some time with the young men and women talking about our future, how they can engage in Wreckin' Park, and how they can help us move our vision, our mission, as well as our values for it as an organization. So without further ado, without me continuing to talk about them, I will turn it to Jerusalem Tiki, who will start allowing the young men and women to introduce themselves. And again, thank you for allowing us to come and let them introduce themselves to you tonight.
Thank you, Director. Good evening, everyone. I'll make my intro real quick. I'm Jerusalem Tiki. I'm Senior Analyst at Wreckin' Parks. I've been working closely along with Sharnese Barnett, who's on this call, and Ashley Stewart, as well as Jenny Morgan with our youth council. Our youth council is here today. So I am going to go ahead and start with Anijah. So, Anijah, go ahead and unmute yourself and introduce yourself to the city council members. Anijah, if Anijah's unable to unmute herself, I'm going to start with Beatrice, then.
Hi, my name is Beatrice Miseras. I am 17 years old and a junior at McDonough School, and I am a member of the new Baltimore City Wreckin' Parks Youth Council. I joined the youth council in hopes of connecting with my city more. Baltimore City has given so much to me growing up here that I thought that the youth council would be a fantastic opportunity to give back and to learn more about the spaces that I walk through every day. So one of the things that I hope to gain from being in the youth council, hope to accomplish, is, you know, being more active in my community, offering my perspective in ways that help our city and our city recreation centers and our youth. So, thank you very much for having me here today.
Thank you, Beatrice. Anijah, I see you just got connected back on. Can you unmute yourself, please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Anajah Stet. I'm 16 years old, and I go to Baltimore City College. When I was taught about the youth council, I was automatically interested because it was an opportunity to expand my mind and use my knowledge to help my community.
Thank you. I'm going to move to Kalia Wiley. Kalia, are you able to unmute yourself? Okay, if not, I'm going to move to Odin Adams.
Hi, my name is Odin Adams. I'm 15 years old and a sophomore at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute. I joined the youth council because I row at Baltimore Community Row and I am directly affected by the decisions made by Baltimore Wreckin' Parks. So I wanted to get involved, and I hope that I can bring more kids my age out to parks and recreational facilities to be more active and hopefully they can find something that interests them personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Odin. Next, I'm going to move to Marigold Louie.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marigold Louie. I am a 15-year-old sophomore at Baltimore City College High. I was born and raised in Accra, Ghana, where I lived until I was 11 years old. Through my work with advocacy, I have realized that the youth voice matters a lot. Most of these matters affect us emotionally, mentally, physically. And I joined the youth council in hopes that I would be able to give the youth a greater voice than we have now, better the community, and give young people a seat at the table. Because I think that young people having a seat at the table matters more than the adults because we're the ones going through the problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Marigold. Next, I want to move to Wiley Henderson. And Wiley, go ahead and unmute yourself. I'm not sure. Maybe there's some technical issues. Okay. Janaya Brown.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Janaya Brown. I'm a junior at Baltimore City College, and I represent the special facilities across the city. I decided to join the youth council because I wanted to invest into a city that has also invested so much into me, and I wanted to do that by helping to implement long-term and sustainable resources into our rec centers to help aid the development of Baltimore's youth. Thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Janaya. I see Aiden Joyner.
Hi, everyone. I'm Aiden Joyner, 15 years old, a ninth grader at Maryland International School, which is a private school out near Elbridge. It's relatively new. The reason I wanted to join the Parks and the Youth Council because when I saw it, I realized it was an opportunity for me to be able to help those in my community as well as other parts of Baltimore. As one, I just like to help people and teach others new things. And two, that I realized that there are a lot of people in Baltimore that especially youth and young adults that need help getting through life. So if this council can help do that, I'd be glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Aiden. Kalia and Wiley are both under attendees. I'm not sure if there's a way to unmute them so that they can speak as well. Okay, I see Wiley is on right now. Wiley? Okay, there may be some technical difficulties while they're figuring it out. I am going to go ahead. One of our youth, Jamar Diggs, had a family emergency, but he still wanted to tell you about himself. So Jamar Diggs is currently a junior at Crystal Ray JCU High School. He's 17 years old. The reason in which he wanted to be a member of the youth council is because he wanted to see a change in the city that he lives in. It doesn't start with his generation because they know what's going on, and they've already started making up their minds. But it really starts with one of the seven-year-olds who are still in development of what it means to be a male or female, to say yes or no. If we could teach our young folks morals and principles, I believe we could break the chain that we are currently in. All right, I'm going to try one more time. Wiley, are you unable to mute yourself? Are you able to hop on? Or Kalia? Okay, cool.
Like just getting used to this whole thing.
It's okay, Wiley. Go ahead.
So, yeah, I'm Wiley Henderson. I am 15. I come from Digital Harbor. And, you know, one of the things I want to... I'm in youth council right now is that I really want to help out the city as best as I can. And I've been here for a while, and I really... It's like a really beautiful place and everything, and it's like really a magical place. And, you know, I kind of really want to help out.
Thank you, Wiley. Kalia, I see you're on as a panelist right now. Can you unmute yourself?
Hi, my name is Kalia Wiley. I'm a 15-year-old freshman at Baltimore City College High School, and I joined the youth council because I kind of want to help other youth peoples like myself. And I kind of just want to, you know, help others in, I guess, a brighter future. It's like a lot of things having gone on in Baltimore City, and just seeing all the wrecks and parts kind of like gave... Helped me see the city differently and to see how beautiful it actually is and how it can be. And I want to give those other teens a chance to see the city and just, you know, be more open to what's around them and help them with their future. I want to help kids find a safe place to grow, learn, and to better themselves as individuals.
Thank you, Kalia. And thank you, City Council, for allowing our youth this opportunity to present themselves to you. If you have any questions?
No, I don't believe so. To all the young folks, thank you for taking the time to join us and introducing yourself to the city of Baltimore. You know, this is streamed online, on Facebook, as well as on TV25. So those introductions were absolutely amazing. We wanted to give you the opportunity to tell your constituents in the city of Baltimore who you are and where you come from. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I thank you so much, Director Moore, for your leadership in bringing this council to us.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll of all members.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the April 5, 2021 proceedings are on the council members' desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. Members, before we get into our main agenda, we have some housekeeping items to take care of this evening. First, I would like to thank all of the staff and direct your attention to the document on your desk or in your email listed the various appointments I've made for boards and commissions. There are many city boards and commissions that have representation from the city council. This work is vital extension of our work here on the council and your working committee. I wanted to take a moment this evening to congratulate all the council members who have been appointed and invite you to join me in thanking them for their service. Committee appointments. Members, also, you have received documentation listing appointments to the Office of Council Service Oversight Committee. And the membership and duties of this committee is established in the city code. Also, on your desk, you will find, or in your email, you will find a letter with my nominations to the members to serve on the committee for legislative investigations. This is a standing committee for the council, and the code directs the council president to nominate the committee members, chair, vice-chair, with approval from the body. At this time, are there any motions to approve this nomination?
Motion to approve the nominations.
Second.
It's been approved and properly seconded. All those in favor of the nominations associated with this committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This motion is approved. Next up, we'll go on to bills signed by the mayor. It could be found on page two of your agenda. We'll now move to bills being introduced for the first reading. Madam Clerk, please go into Bill 21-63.
City Council Bill 21-006, rezoning 1201 Dundalk Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1201 Dundalk Avenue, block 6738, block 36, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque from the R3 zoning district to the C2 zoning district. Sponsor, Councilmember Cohen.
This resolution is assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-0064, zoning, conditional use, retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverages sales, a portion of the 3901 Boston Street, also known as 3975 Boston Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverages sales on the property known as 3901 Boston Street, also known as 3975 Boston Street, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Councilmember Cohen.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-0065, rezoning 1103 through 1109 North Washington Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1103 through 1109 North Washington Street, block 1551, block 1, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque for the R8 zoning district to the IMU 1 zoning district. Sponsor, Councilmember Glover.
This resolution has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Now on the 21-66.
City Council Bill 21-0066, retirement systems, recruited investment and divestment fossil fuel companies for the purpose of prohibiting the new investment of certain retirement funds and fossil fuel companies, requiring the divestment of certain retirement funds and fossil fuel companies within a certain timeframe, requiring certain reviews specifying a certain procedure for the divestor of investments, authorizing certain exemptions, defining certain terms, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors are Councilmember Conway, Costello, Stokes, Middleton, Torrance, Ramos, McCray, Burnett, Porter, and Bullock.
Please let the record reflect that I have signed on as a co-sponsor to this as well.
And Mr. President, I just want to make a note. Although I appreciate the intent of the bill, I did not request to be a sponsor of this bill.
Got you. Somehow, they mixed up Mosby and McCray. So if... Let the record reflect that Chairman McCray... Chairwoman McCray is not on this, but I am on this bill. Is there any additional co-sponsors at this time? At this time, I will allow the sponsor of the bill, Chairman Conway, to speak to you. The floor is yours.
So, as we know, climate change poses a massive and significant risk to the planet, to our city, and to our residents. As temperatures rise, our storms get worse. Sea level rises impacting our inner harbor. And electricity, of course, gets more expensive as folks need to cool their homes. Baltimore is already spending millions to mitigate these effects of climate change. And we're also doing this while we're dealing with crime. We're dealing with COVID-19 and other issues. But the looming threat of climate change still has not gone away. This bill requires that the city pension funds divest from fossil fuels within five years. So by 2026, we would have to completely remove ourselves from fossil fuels. It reserves the... Under emergency circumstances, it will reserve the right for the board to suspend the ordinance with a request to the mayor and to board of estimates. Baltimore has been pioneering... Baltimore has led on climate change for years. We have strong local advocates. And we've also, in 2018, issued a lawsuit against fossil fuel companies and the impact that they've had on our city. So this would be further in line with those actions that we've already taken. This would not be the first divestment pill that we've seen in the city. The very first one was in the 1980s when we divested from South Africa's apartheid government. And then again, in the 2000s, when we divested from Sudanese government because of the genocide in Darfur. So, you know, we're also not the first to do this. This... A similar piece of legislation has been passed in New York, in New Orleans, in Annapolis, and even in DC. So we wouldn't be first, but we certainly would be joining a worthwhile cause. And I encourage all my colleagues to sign on, and I appreciate those that have supported thus far. I think it's about time we put our money where our mouth is. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we have... I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. This bill is assigned to... Sorry about that. This resolution... This bill will be assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. To the next bill, 21-67, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-0067, Baltimore City Residency Requirements, prohibition against purposeful evasion. For the purpose of prohibiting a reorganization or shift in staff reporting requirements in order to purposefully evade the Baltimore City residency requirements and establishing that a violation of that prohibition is an ethics violation enforceable under the city ethics code. Sponsors, Councilmember McCray, Porter, Middleton, Ramos, and Bullock.
I see the hand of Councilman Torrance, as well as Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to be added as a co-sponsor.
Got you. Yep. As well as Chairman Stokes. Chairman... Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. During the last term, the city council passed legislation requiring senior-level managers who report directly to agency heads to be Baltimore City residents and registered voters in Baltimore City. This bill is simply the compliance and enforcement piece of the previous legislation. And some may ask, well, why do we need further compliance and enforcement? After the city residency requirement law was passed, the Labor Committee held a series of hearings to ensure that agencies were in compliance with the law. And what the committee found was that some agencies had rearranged their organizational charts, which led to questions by committee members if it was done in an effort to evade the intent of the law. What impact does this have on our city? 57% of the employees who hold managerial positions in city government do not live in Baltimore City, and that results in approximately 792,000 in annual lost income tax revenue from $33 million in annual payroll costs to these employees. Imagine if those individuals were city residents and how that could drastically change our local economy. As we continue through the conversation around succession planning and local hiring, adding this enforcement component to the residency requirement law will ensure that city government is leading by example, and the employees who hold these important positions have a vested interest in our communities and are true stakeholders. Thank you, Mr. Presidents and colleagues, for your support.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations as well. On to 21-68.
City Council Bill 21-0068, curing mistakes in bids for the purpose of permitting the city purchasing agent to waive minor irregularities in bids, permitting a bidder to cure mistakes in a bid under certain conditions, permitting a bidder to withdraw a bid under certain conditions, defining certain terms, requiring the city purchasing agent to repair a determination showing the relief that was granted or denied regarding a bid's correction or withdrawal, and clarifying the duties of the city purchasing agent, notwithstanding this subtitle. Sponsors, Council President Mosby, Councilmember Middleton, Ramos, and Bullock.
I believe from lunch, there were some additional co-sponsors that we might have missed. If they are, you can raise your hand. I see Chairman Stokes, Chairwoman McCray, Councilman Torrance, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Glover. Hearing and seeing none. This is a bill that we talked about at lunchtime. It's just part of best practice, particularly when you deal with some of the issues that we've seen from a procurement perspective here in the city of Baltimore. You know, as discussed, we've definitely moved in the wrong direction over the past 30 years as it relates to uplifting local minority-owned and women-owned businesses. I think there's a statistic out there. 30 years ago, there was a dozen-plus African-American-owned businesses that ranked within the top 100 of the United States here that was headquartered here in the city of Baltimore. Today, we only have one. This is a process that allows for smaller, local businesses who maybe not necessarily have the institutional knowledge or connectivity. If they were to do something, a slight minor error in their application, it provides for a curing process. A process that has due diligence that's built into it, but a process that's fair and equal for all that are participating. So excited for the co-sponsors, excited for the hearing. As you know, this is one bill out of a package of bills that I'm excited to partner with Councilmember Burnett, as well as Councilmember Glover on. Again, as we talk about growing our city, we have to grow our businesses inside of our city. And as we grow our businesses inside of our city, they'll be connected to the communities and hire the young folks that we're providing real opportunities to. So this is one variable in a very complicated equation around rebuilding businesses in the city of Baltimore. But again, thank you to the co-sponsors of this bill. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations as well. Clerk, if you could... Operations as well. Clerk, if you could read Twenty One Dash Sixty Nine.
City Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Six Nine, Transparency and Procurement, for the purpose of adding certain disclosure requirements related to fulfillment of detailed specifications for contracts, prior contracting experience, and the demographic characteristic of employees, other sources of labor, and board members of contractors and subcontractors for city contracts over a hundred thousand dollars, defining certain terms, establishing certain administrative penalties, and generally relating to better transparency in Baltimore City for procurement. Sponsors are Councilmember Glover, City Council President Mosby, Councilmember Stokes, Cohen, Bullock, Burnett, Ramos, McCray, Torrance, and Middleton.
I believe I see the hand of Chairman Yitzi, Chairman Slifer. No additional hands. Councilman Glover, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues, those of you who have co-sponsored this bill early on during our lunching. This is very, very important to me. One of my goals when I got elected was to restore the public trust in our government, and what better way to do that was to do it through the city council. This bill is essential to provide transparency in the city's procurement process. It will make transparent the city's consideration for bids or contracts, and how we translate to inclusively and diversely add those participated small businesses and contractors onto this bill. This bill stands to help monitor whether our contracts are employee city citizens, and it also allowed us to take control on how we act when it comes to who those monies go to. We want to make sure that those contracts don't go to those family members who subcontract those contracts to individuals, and we want to make sure that, you know, six months prior to them getting those contracts, we want to see the data, you know, that happened way before they got this other contract, to make sure that they had hired city residents. Again, this is really, really near and dear to me, because I'm big on providing opportunities for residents that live here in the city of Baltimore, and whatever way to pay taxes right here where you stay. A lot of times when I go in the, excuse me, when I go out here in the community, I see these contractors that are hiring, you know, some brown people, but I know for a fact that a young man or woman don't mind holding a sign up that says "Slow and Go" for twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour, and that's not what I'm seeing. So again, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak on this bill, and I look forward to my colleagues' support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glover. This resolution is assigned, I'm sorry, this bill is assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. On to Twenty One Dash Seventy.
City Council Bill Two One Dash Seventy, Required Market Research, for the purpose of requiring contracting agencies to conduct market research investigations before determining that no qualified certified business enterprises are available to enter into leases or concession contracts. Requiring the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office to attempt to identify qualified certified business enterprises is contracting agencies state that no qualified certified business enterprises are available to enter into leases or concession contracts. Requiring Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office to notify the contracting agency and the Board of Estimates if the office identifies qualified certified business enterprises that are available to enter into leases or concession contracts. Requiring contracting agencies that want to waive or reduce N B E W B E contract goals to conduct market research and document the market research to demonstrate why it is necessary to waive or reduce N B E W B E contract goals. Requiring the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, if granting the waiver or reduction of contract goals, to give the waiver or reduction of contract goals and the accompanying market research documentation to the Board of Estimates. Requiring contracting agencies that want to waive utilization requirements for a specific contract to conduct market research and document the market research to demonstrate that needed goods and services are only available from a sole source. Requiring the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, if granting the waiver of utilization requirements for a specific contract because the needed goods and services are only available from a sole source, to give the waiver and the accompanying market research documentation to the Board of Estimates. Defining a certain term and making the Board of Estimates the ultimate arbiter regarding the reduction or waiver of N B E W B E contract goals and utilization requirements. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Council President Mosby, Councilmembers Middleton, Bullock, Torrance, Porter, Stokes, and Ramos.
Are there additional co-sponsors? I see Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen. At this time, I yield the floor to the gentleman from the Eighth District.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. So, this bill does essentially tries to move us away from sole-source contracts, which perpetuate a lot of inequities in large-dollar projects. It gives an equal shot to businesses, and it forces the city to look into gaps that may exist in the market. If there aren't businesses that are producing a certain type of product, then that gives us a path forward to try and grow N Bs, WBs, and pushing them into those areas where gaps exist. It also pushes agencies to engage in minority and women-owned businesses when going through a procurement process to make sure that they have an equal shot, an equal shake to get city contracts. And so, I'm looking forward to a good discussion on this. Thank you to the co-sponsors, and thank you for the partnership, President Mosby.
Well, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to resolutions. Clerk, please read the resolutions, starting with Twenty One Dash Thirty Nine R. I'm sorry, before we move on, folks, just from a housekeeping perspective, that previous bill, Twenty One Dash Seven Zero, is assigned as well to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Madam Clerk, please read Twenty One Dash Thirty Nine R.
Resolution Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Three Nine R, Violence Against Women and Overlooked Public Health Crisis, for the purpose of inviting the police commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department, the health commissioner of the Baltimore City Health Department, Baltimore City State's Attorney, the director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety, and Engagement, the executive director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the sheriff of the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, and certain community-based organizations to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the rise in violence against women and what strategies are being put in place to reverse those epidemic. Sponsors are Councilmember McCray, Porter, Middleton, Ramos.
Any additional co-sponsors? I see Glover, I see Torrance. I see Chairman Stokes, Chairman Conway. Madam Chair, the floor is yours. I'm sorry, and I also see Councilmember Z. Cohen. Madam Chairwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Since two thousand and seven, there have been three hundred and ninety-four women and girls killed in Baltimore City. That averages out to twenty-six lives lost each year. Last year, we saw the highest number of female deaths in the history of our city, as forty-nine women and girls were killed. Those numbers are just a snapshot as more women were victims of aggravated and common assaults, sexual violence, and other serious crimes. This is a public health crisis, and as we call on city agencies to discuss what strategies are being put in place to address this issue, we are also going to discuss the outcomes of this violence. The outcomes are multifaceted and impact the mental, emotional, and physical health of our women and our families across our city. I look forward to a meaningful dialogue on this topic. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. And now, we're going to move on to Twenty One Dash Forty R.
Resolution Twenty
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, again. That bill, Twenty One Dash, that resolution, Twenty One Dash Thirty Nine R, has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee, now under Twenty One Dash Forty R.
Resolution Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Four Zero R, Informational Hearing, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, for the purpose of inviting the director of the Department of Planning, the commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the executive director of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, the commissioner of the Baltimore City Health Department, the commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department, the acting director of the Department of Public Works, the director of the Department of Transportation, the chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department, the state's attorney for Baltimore City, the sheriff for Baltimore City, the chief of the Baltimore City School Police, the director of the Department of General Services, the director of the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the director of the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss ways that the city can prevent crime through the concept utilized in the crime prevention through environmental design model. Sponsors are Councilmember Conway, Porter, Middleton.
Are there additional? I see Chairwoman McCray with her hand raised. At this time, I see Councilmember Torrance. At this time, the floor is yours, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, redlining was banned fifty years ago, but the negative effects of these discriminatory public policies still impact many of our communities today. Nearly seventy percent of formerly redlined neighborhoods in Baltimore remain predominantly minority, as well as lower income. This cycle of poverty and disinvestment plays out in many, many of the conversations that we have around abandoned houses, to illegal dumping, to let paint, and the list goes on. The harsh reality is that crime is a direct manifestation of breakdowns in each of these other systems. Statistics show that over the last five years, three of our city's police districts have had more than two-hundred-and-eighty-five homicides each. There should be no surprise that these districts serviced the communities where redlining occurred. So, as we continue to focus on the people who are perpetuating this cycle of violence, we must also leverage the tools that we have in zoning, housing, and other related codes to reduce crime through the design and maintenance of our structures in our neighborhoods. To that end, I encourage my colleagues to support, and I look forward to the thoughtful dialogue on this topic. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. That resolution has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, on to Twenty One Dash Forty One R.
Resolution Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Four One R, Informational Hearing, Domestic Violence in Baltimore City, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office, the Baltimore Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety, and Engagement, the Health Department, the Sheriff's Office, as well as community advocates fighting against domestic violence, to share their expertise with the Baltimore City Council and the general public, and to discuss programs available to victims of domestic violence. Sponsors are Councilmember Conway, Porter, Middleton, Ramos, and Bullock.
Also see the hand of Chairwoman McCray, Councilman Torrance, Councilman Burnett, Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing is going to be slightly different than my colleague Chairman McCray's hearing on domestic violence. I come at this with a perspective looking at the systems that we have in place, the programs that we have in place, what we expect of our city agencies to support folks that are dealing with domestic violence. I had the opportunity to serve as the analyst for DV Stat while serving at City Stat, and I'm hoping to dig into those processes and make sure that we're meeting the new need and the new challenge that we face with addressing the domestic violence problem that we have in our city in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic. So with that, I look forward to the thoughtful conversation once again, and the support of my colleagues on this issue.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Madam Clerk, that has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Now, on to Resolution Twenty One Dash Forty Two R.
Resolution Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Four Two R, Approval For The Exchange Of A Class Eight Seven License For Use At Three Five Zero One Boston Street, also known as Three Eight Thirty One Boston Street, To A Class Eight Seven License For Use At Thirty Nine Zero One Boston Street, also known as Thirty Nine Seven Five Boston Street. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Annotated Code, Alcoholics Beverage Article, Section Twelve Nine Zero Two One D One, To Allow A License Holder Holding A Valid Class Eight Seven Beer Wine And Liquor License Issued For Use At Three Five Zero One Boston Street, Also Known As Three Eight Three One Boston Street, Baltimore, Maryland, Twenty One Two Two Four, To Apply To The Board Of Liquor License Commissioners For Baltimore City To Exchange Their Class Eight Seven Beer Wine And Liquor License For A Class Eight Seven Beer Wine And Liquor License For Use At Thirty Nine Zero One Boston Street, Also Known As Thirty Nine Seven Five Boston Street, Baltimore, Maryland, Two One Two Two Four. Sponsors are Councilmember Co.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. On to Twenty One Dash Forty Three R.
Resolution Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Four Three R, Downtown Management Authority Composition, Members Selected By The Baltimore City Council, For The Purpose Of Selecting And Approving Councilmember Eric T. Costello To Represent The Baltimore City Council On The Downtown Management Authority's Board Of Directors Pursuant To City Code Article Fourteen, Section One Through Seven, E three. Sponsors are Council President Mosby And Councilmember Middleton.
At this point, I would like to recognize Madam Vice Chair, Madam Vice President, Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption for this bill.
Without objections of the rules being suspended, hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Stokes. Now, we're going to keep it with Madam Vice President. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I'd like to suspend the rules for Bill Number Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Four Three R, For Immediate Adoption.
Clerk, will call the rule for immediate adoption?
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Co.
Yes.
Councilmember McCray.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorsey. Councilmember Conway. Councilmember Slifer.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Councilmember Torrance. Councilmember Burnett.
Yes.
Councilmember Bull.
Yes.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Costello. Councilmember Stokes.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover. Councilmember
Yes.
Yes.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. Now, on to the consent calendar. In Section A, at the back of your agenda, you will find it. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
So moved.
I heard a motion. Can somebody formally second?
Second. Second, Costello.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the calendar is approved. We now move on to bills on second reader. I would like to first recognize Chairman Costello.
President, I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without any objection, we will read short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are on to short titles for the duration of the meeting. First up is Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk, if you could read formally into the record, Twenty One Dash Twenty Six.
City Council Bill Two One Dash Zero Zero Two Six, Rezoning Twelve Oh One South Canton Avenue.
At this point, I would like to recognize Madam Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. On, there were two bills heard in the Committee on Economic and Community Development, and they were heard on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. The first bill, of course, was Twenty Dash Zero Zero Two Six, Rezoning Twelve Oh One South Cape Town Avenue. The sponsor was Councilwoman Porter of the Tenth District. The hearing, the committee heard the bill on April thirteenth. I move the finding of facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of adopting the finding of the facts, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Finding of the facts are adopted. Back to you, Vice President Middleton.
And I move the bill favorable as, I move the bill favorable.
Is there a second?
Second, our council.
Second.
The bill has been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved and printed for third reader. On to Twenty One Dash Twenty Seven, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Two One Dash Zero Zero Two Seven, R P P Area Nine, Federal Hill, Exception Four One East, Montgomery Street.
At this point, I would like to yield the floor to Madam Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The sponsor of this bill was Councilman Costello of the Eleventh District. The committee heard this bill on April thirteenth as well. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second, our Councilman Stokes.
Moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill is approved. This bill is approved from second reader. It will be printed for third reader. We turn now to bills on third reading and final passage. The clerk will read the bill and call the roll. First up is twenty-one dash thirty-eight, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero zero three eight, Human Trafficking Notice Requirements, Modifications. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen. Councilmember McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. And Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash forty-four, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero zero four four, Retirement Board's Composition. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. And Ramos.
This bill is also approved. Now, we'll move into committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcement. First up is ECD. Madam Vice President Middleton.
No announcements, no announcements at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next up is Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a work session on Thursday, May the sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, beginning at ten AM for Council Bill twenty dash zero zero three nine, Local Hiring Employment Plan. On that same day, the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, beginning at, can't be ten o'clock. Okay, yeah, that's a different date, beginning at ten AM for Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero two eight, Landmark List Clifton School. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Now, we're going to throw it over to Northeast Baltimore and the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May the fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, at ten AM on Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero two seven R, Informational Hearing Illegal Dumping. The hearing will be conducted virtually through WebEx. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, we're going to jump on York Road and drive up to North Baltimore. Chairman Conway of Public Safety and Government Operations.
I like that picture. I don't have any announcements from the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee.
All right, cool. Now, we're going to jump all the way over to Northwest Baltimore. Rules Legislative Oversight, Chairman Schleifer.
We have no announcements. Thank you.
And then, last but not least, we're going to bring it all the way down to Central Baltimore, Southeast Baltimore, Ways and Means, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's a long drive to South Baltimore from Northwest. All the filing for announcements are going to be virtual WebEx hearings. Ways and Committee, Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at ten AM on Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero six two, High Performance Newly Constructed Dwellings Clarifications at the Request of Councilman Costello. Ways and Means Committee will hold the hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at ten oh one AM, Council Bill twenty-one one dash zero zero four one, Board of Estimates, Basic Organization and Procurement Thresholds at the Request of the Office of the Comptroller. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at ten oh two AM, Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero. Real Estate Modernization at the Request of the Office of the Comptroller. Council Bill twenty-one.
Chairman Costello.
Three.
Chairman Costello.
Insurance.
Can you hear me? Could you reread the bill? You had a slight glitch.
Yes, sir. Give me one second, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at ten oh two AM on Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero four two, Real Estate Records Modernization at the Request of the Comptroller. Was that the bill you're referring to, Mr. President?
I believe so. I believe.
Thank you, Mr. President. And finally, one second. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at ten oh three AM, Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero four three, Committee on Insurance and Risk Management Revisions at the Request of the Office of the Comptroller. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Now, we will move on to regular announcements. Members, if you have any regular announcements, please be prepared to communicate them at this point. Before we jump into members' announcements, I think all of us have a very important thank you to our amazing Paige Ayana. She came and presented to us three, like, three weeks, three meetings ago. She's always here on time, no matter the weather, no matter the circumstance, always ripe and ready to go. She literally symbolizes all the potential hope and promise we have of our young folks coming behind her and in her generation. So, Ayana, from the bottom of all of our hearts, we're going to give you a huge congratulations and thank you to send you off. So, on the count of three, if everybody could cheer and scream as loud as possible, our amazing bright scholar right here in the city of Baltimore, our page, Ayana. So, one, two, three. So, for folks out there who don't know, Ayana is out here. She's controlling WebEx. She's ensuring that all of these amazing council members, we can hear and see them, and everything is moving smoothly. She's basically in the control room. So, again, Ayana, thank you from the bottom of our heart for all the work you do, not only for us, but more importantly, for the citizens of Baltimore. Next up, are there any additional regular announcements from the body?
Mr. President.
I think that might be a first, but Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I just want to add the family of Derek Chauvin, Chauvin, to our prayer moment of silence list as we know that the jury is deliberating as we're having our council meeting. And we just, it's important that we keep that family in prayer as they move forward in the process that the jury is following.
Okay. Any other announcements?
Mr. President?
Yes, gentleman from the Seventh District.
Thank you, sir. I just want to lift the name of Teresa Hall, who was a longtime staff person with the City Council and the Mayor's Office, who passed recently. I would be remiss without mentioning her name on the record as she used to be behind the scenes in many of the events of both the Council and the Mayor's Office.
One hundred percent. Thank you so much for that, Chairman Councilman Torrance. Any other announcements?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to say something, sir.
Yes, the floor is yours. The gentlewoman from the Tenth District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to formally recognize Mr. Quentin and Megan Lathan on celebrating five years in business for Beauty Plus. It's one of the staples in Baltimore City for black hair care. And so, I just want to congratulate them on their five years and wish them many, many, many more years of business in Baltimore City.
Actually, a huge round of applause from the City Council on that. Are there any other announcements out there?
I just want to, I want to thank my colleagues, Mr. President.
To the gentleman in the Thirteenth District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to give a shout out. I think my colleagues, Z. Cohen and Odette Ramos for sending her staff to how to help create a joint effort in us, you know, crossing those district lines to clean our great city of Baltimore. And I look forward to myself and my team working with you guys and the rest of the council because we had fun, we had donuts and all that good stuff. But again, I really, really thank you guys from the bottom of my heart. Being a freshman, you know, councilperson coming in and for you guys to come out to give me that support means a lot to me and my staff. So, I look forward to working with my other colleagues in the future in their districts as we make Baltimore a cleaner, greener, brighter place to live. Thank you.
We love council manic partnerships. So, thank you, Councilman Glover, Cohen, as well as Councilwoman Ramos for that partnership. I see Chairman Costello's hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to kind of second what Council Vice President Middleton said about the Derek Chauvin criminal trial and making sure that we're uplifting George Floyd's family in our prayers during this difficult time for the family. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Anyone else at this point? So, I think, I'm sorry, did I hear something else? No? Well, at this point, I would like to recognize Vice President Middleton. We're going to uplift Ms. Teresa Hall, an amazing public servant who spent years upon years in streets, in corners, in houses, in churches, and anywhere to give back to the citizens of Baltimore. We'd like to thank her for all of her hard work and her support. Her work is not done in vain. We know that she's watching over us like she would be at all the other city events. We'd like to thank Ms. Hall. I mean, we'd like to thank her family for all the sacrifices she's made to the city for such a long time. And as Vice President said, as well as Chairman Costello, we lift up the family of George Floyd, who have been traumatized by watching his horrific death hundreds and hundreds of times on social media, in the news, in the courtroom. The one thing I'll say to the citizens of Baltimore, Baltimore City has always been at the forefront of ensuring that we protest and ensuring that our voices are heard, but we've done it in a productive way. And the expectation is that we will continue to do so, ask the council members to spread that message throughout their constituents. But again, Madam Vice President, if we could uplift Ms. Teresa Hall, as well as the family of George Floyd, as we close out, I yield the floor to you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman, for definitely for that correction in name. It's definitely the family of George Floyd. And, you know, we have had so many shootings and just so many problems with guns throughout our nation. And it's just a time that we need to continue to be praying for our city as well as the country. So, on that note, the next council meeting, the next council meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, May third, two thousand and twenty-one, at five PM. And may we have a moment of silence for the family of George Floyd, Teresa Hall, the ninety-two now victims of homicide in two thousand and twenty-one, and the now eight hundred and ninety-nine Baltimoreans who have died from COVID-nineteen since the pandemic began, and also for the families that continue to struggle with our opioid epidemic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. There being no business, no further business at the desk. This concludes the ninth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.